Good evening, everyone. I'll call this May 24th, 2017 City Council Meeting to Order. There being no one that wants to speak to us this evening, I would ask you all to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and unto the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would look for a motion to approve the minutes of the special City Council Work Session of May 9th, 2017, and the regular City Council Meeting of May 9th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is passed. This item for council consideration involves the receipt of a City of Richfield Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ended December 31st, 2016. Briefly, I just indicate that state law requires all general-purpose local governments to be audited in accordance with U.S. generally-accepted auditing standards by a firm of licensed, certified public accountants. With that being said, I welcome our certified public accountant to give us the report.
Evening. I'm Matt Mayer, representing your audit firm, a Bergen KDV, and you set up my presentation very well, so I'll dispense with the first couple parts of it. What I want to do tonight is provide the results of the audit for the 2016 fiscal year, which were represented by three reports, and then also provide just a little bit of financial analysis, so if I can maybe take eight or 10 minutes of your time tonight just to give you a good overview before you accept the financial statements for the 2016 fiscal year. The city has a responsibility to prepare financial statements for the public each year. Our job as auditors is to come in to test, examine, and give an opinion on those, the final product of which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which you receive in your packets. You can look through that as we go along, but it probably just is easy to follow my PowerPoint. All the main points are going to be on here for your benefit and for the members of the audience as well. We provided an unmodified or clean opinion for 2016. That's the best we can give the city, and it means that the numbers we're going to be looking at tonight are a true and accurate picture of the city's financial position at the end of the 2016 fiscal year. Now, the city is also required, if it receives more than $750,000 of federal money, to have a single audit. This is more of a compliance-based audit to make sure you're spending the federal dollars appropriately, and we do this on a rotating basis with the various grants that you receive. This year, we tested the Section 8 housing grant that you received and had no findings or no issues with that particularly. And then finally, the Office of the State Auditor requires that we test the city on various state statutes that apply to municipalities here in the state of Minnesota, making sure there's no conflicts of interest with anyone on the city council, making sure all the contracting and bidding you do is on the front. And if we have any concerns there, we bring them out through that report, and again, no findings there as well. So I'm offering three reports as the final product of our audit for 2016, and all three are the best that I can provide you, so a very clean audit for the 2016 fiscal year. A credit to your finance team under the leadership of Director Regis. I want to thank him for his work as a team. With that setup, I just want to take a few more minutes just to give you an overview of the performance of your general fund, as well as your enterprise funds here at the city, which make up most of the activity of the city. We look at the general fund in the context of the budget. As council members, you set the budget at the end of each year, hand that off to administration. It's their job to make that happen during the year and report back to you on progress throughout the year to make sure you're on track or off track. So when we look at year-end, the best way to look at how the general fund performs is whether we basically follow the budget you established. And if you recall, you approved a budget that called for about $20.5 million of revenue, about $20.7 million in spending, and transfers in from other funds by about $1.2 million down. Well, basically, a balanced budget, inflows would equal outflows. Your fund balance, your financial position, would be the same at the beginning of the year as it was at the end. Your revenue projection was very good. You actually outpaced it by about $38,000. You can see property taxes a little bit under budget, but licenses and permits and charges for services making up for that. Spending was kept well in check during the year. You came in under budget by $337,000, and as you can see here, all of the departments contributed to that. Everybody kept an eye on their individual budgets. The department heads did, and as a result, everyone came in under budget, and you had savings for the year in relation to your budget of $337,000. As a result, transfers in from other funds were not as significant or as needed as much, and as a result, your fund balance at the end of the year did increase by about $14,000 in relation to the breakeven that you had budgeted. So what that means in the end is your fund balance ended up being about $8.7 million, and your fund balance is your financial health, and that's the way to evaluate how well you're doing as a city. And you've established an internal goal for yourself of a 40% fund balance. You have 40% of a year's worth of spending in fund balance, and at the end of the year, you had about 42% at $8.7. So you're outpacing your own goals at the end of the year. So from your own perspective, you're in good financial shape in relation to your own. Couple of items on the revenue. Revenue was only up about 2/10ths of 1% over 2015's numbers, and one number that's going to jump out at you is that property tax line item. Here's a five-year history of each of your major revenue streams. There was a tax appeal during the year from one of your major taxpayers that was successful, and as a result, that money was refunded to them, and those are dollars that you didn't receive as revenue in the general fund. So you would normally see the property tax line item there being gradually increasing each year. You took a step back in 2016 because of that refund related to that tax quarter. Spending for the year, on the other hand, was up about 4.5%. Your priorities when it comes to spending are public safety, which is the largest category there, which is mostly your police department, and fire comes in second, and public work is third. If you look at the spending in each of the categories there, they were up a little bit over the prior year, mostly inflationary increases over the prior year numbers, with the exception of general government and the city council that took a small step back, spent a little bit less in 2016 than you did in 2015 for that particular area. I'm going to jump ahead to the enterprise funds to wrap things up tonight. You've got three major enterprise funds here at the city. The liquor fund is the first that we'll look at, and sales at the liquor fund the last two years have been on the decline. You can see from 2014 down to 2015 and '16, each of those years, you've taken a step back, from a high of about $11.5 million back in 2014 to a low for the five-year period of about $10,400,000. Now, there's a lot of activity going on at the stores the last couple of years, so it's difficult to say whether this is a trend or not. Remodelings closed some of the stores down for a period of time, road construction around some of the stores as well, but there is some competition now in the area as well, and we don't really know how much that's impacting you directly and how much is related to some of the closures that you had related to remodeling and the road construction. So we're going to keep an eye on this over the course of the next couple of years. One thing that we can say is that your gross profit margin or your profitability in the store is at 25%, which was about a 1% increase over the prior year, so you're getting your pricing when it comes to that. And if you look at the metro average there on the far-right column, you're right in line with the state averages when it comes to your price. That being said, the store made $624,000 in profit back in 2015 and did take a step back this year in 2016 down to $400,000. So again, we're going to keep an eye on that with you. We'll report back next year, and I think next year is probably going to give us a good idea of how things have shaken out through all the activity. Wrap things up, we'll take a look at each of your utility funds. Revenue was $7.6 million versus $7.8 million in spending in your water and sewer fund for the year. We look at the performance of these funds just like a regular business, whether you had operating income or not, and if we look at it with depreciation factored in, you did have a loss this year, and one thing to keep an eye on, the water and sewer fund, while the revenue's been going up and you've been keeping an eye on rates, you have been losing a little bit of ground each of the last couple of years there. The gray bar indicates your operating income or loss with depreciation factored in, and we factor it out as well because it's not a cash expense, and you can see though that that purple bar, even though it's positive, has been moving in the wrong direction as well. So I know you've been working closely with the administration team here to keep an eye on those rates. We want to make sure that you keep a level profitability in this fund because not only does that needed to cover the cost of doing business in the fund, but as you look to future renewal and replacement, that's where those dollars are ultimately going to come from as well, with the user charge. And finally, tonight, the storm sewer fund has performed well each of the last couple of years. We can see operating income both with depreciation factored in and factored out, and that's where we like to see a utility fund land, is that we're covering all costs and we're able to set aside a little bit for future renewal and replacement costs. Again, I would say your storm sewer fund is performing as anticipated. I'll leave it at that. Be happy to respond to any questions you had as you reviewed the materials. And back to you, Mr. Mayer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any questions or comments for Mr. Mayer? Thanks again, sir.
All right.
Hearing no questions or comments at this time, I would move to accept the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report of the city for the year ended December 31st, 2016.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The report is accepted. Next item on the agenda is the presentation for National Public Works Week, May 21st, '27, 2017, with our esteemed Public Works Director, Krista Nasher, approaching the podium.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott and council members. Like I said, I'm Krista Nasher, your Public Works Director, and I just wanted to remind you that it's Public Works Week, National Public Works Week this week. This year, the theme is Public Works connects us, and we like to take this time during the week to celebrate and talk about the good work that the Public Works professionals are doing to help improve and keep going with the quality of life in Richfield. And so, right here is the national poster, and the way we're connecting with our residents this year is we're trying a social media connection, so we're not doing a video, well, we have little short videos that are social media-friendly, but we didn't do a long video. And so, we've got Facebook posts, we're doing multiple posts every day, letting people know what we're working on and how we're serving the residents, and we're getting some interaction, which is what we were hoping for with the residents. And then, we're also putting things out on Twitter and Instagram, hashtag RichfieldNow and things like that. So as of this morning, we had reached over 1,700 people on Facebook. And then, just to keep it short, thank you. If you see somebody out there working in the streets and they're out there daily, we have over 50 people working daily to keep, to provide the services, you know, if you have a chance to say thank you or to see how their day is going, I know they'd really appreciate that, so that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Councilmember Garcia?
Yes. Recently, we had our street, the Mill and Overlay folks came over, and Sweet Streets, and I was really very proud of what the work that they did because our street really needed it. I mean, we used to come in from 70th and dodge all the potholes and swerve, and I was really impressed. They did a good job, and you know, it didn't bother us in terms of coming in and leaving our driveway. It was, they just, it almost seemed like they just would come back and make sure that everything was right, and that little machine with a giant roller, and as I was saying at the study session, if there was a little seam that you could barely see, they ironed it out. And I was very impressed, and I thought this Sweet Street project is going on extremely well, and I'm really glad I thought about it and brought it forth. I'm just teasing, of course, but congratulations on the super work that you're doing, you and your folks at Public Works.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is council discussion, hats off to hometown hits. Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez, would you like to start us off?
I have two items today. One of them is to let everybody know that our free youth playground and lunch program is going to begin on Monday, June 12th, and it's for children ages 6 to 12, and a free lunch is included for kids who are under 18 or under. You can go on to the city website and register online, and it's a free summer program for children where they're able to participate in Augsburg Park, Jefferson Park, and Washington Park, and art projects, leadership activities, you know, playing on the playground, games, and they're supervised. And it's just a great opportunity to get your kids out this summer active and doing something in our community, in our parks. And the second topic is just, I wanted to recognize a group that is based here in Richfield. There is a Spanish-speaking childcare provider group that has been around for five years now that started here in Richfield and is based in Richfield, and they have monthly trainings for family, friend, and neighbor childcare providers to get trained on school readiness, early childhood development, healthy eating, and physical activity, and they have been recognized across the state, and they've been recognized across the country for their work. Apparently, they're the only network of its kind, and the National League of Cities brought staff to Minnesota for an event, but during that time, they requested to meet with the leaders of the network and ask what childcare providers that are in-home care providers think cities can do across the country to provide better support to their at-home childcare providers that are licensed and nonlicensed. So I was very proud of being able to attend that meeting, and hopefully, some excellent work comes out of that.
Councilmember Howard?
Well, first, Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez sold herself short a little bit. She took an active role in starting that organization, and so, thank you for your leadership. I had a few items. One is to invite everyone to our Unity in the Community event tomorrow at Veterans Park from 5:00 to 7:30, and this is a celebration of different cultures in Richfield put on by our Police Multicultural Advisory Committee, so it should be a fun family event and a chance to interact with some of our police officers and firefighters, and so it would encourage everyone to come. And then, lastly, I just wanted to congratulate, we had a special election yesterday. Thank all the Ward 1 residents that came out and voted in the special election, and I wanted to congratulate Simon Troutman, the council member-elect for Ward 1. Will be full strength very soon here. And also, just want to thank all the other candidates that ran. There were several candidates in a race that I think got more people interested and excited. It's tough to get people energized around a special election, but we had several candidates that worked very hard, and so thank all of them for doing so.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to bring up Memorial Day's ceremony, which will be held May 29th at 2:00 at Veterans Park. It's rain or shine. It's a great idea to come out, and we have, I don't know how many new veterans whose names have been inscribed, and so we want to come out and celebrate and let veterans know that they were there for us, so let's be there for them. Also, you know, when the gentleman was talking about enterprise funds, and I was thinking about the liquor store and how that's been going down a little bit, I just wanted to say to the citizens, you know, it's a good idea, when you drink liquor, to buy responsibly and to buy at your local municipal stores. So, and then, I wanted to mention the fact that last week, we had Joan Helberger passed away. Her service will be June 12th at St. Peter's Catholic Church, and the reason I mentioned Joan is because she has had been on the HRA for years and years and years. I mean, she was really a fountain of information and hard work and her constant dedication to the housing and the development of our community, and so she will certainly be missed. She was also very active in the Richfield Foundation as its treasurer, so just wanted to let folks know that June 12th will be the service. Also, I wanted to mention the election yesterday and congratulate Simon Troutman, the council member-elect, and you know, it was a very, very close election, you know, the skin-of-your-teeth type of election, and I was surprised because I thought last time that the mayor ran, you know, his election was so close, he barely won it. I think he only got about 84%, so, but I like to tease the mayor, but anyway, this one was really definitely closed by 20 votes. So I think the candidates that ran had some good ideas and brought forth some good ideas to discuss. I also want to thank Gordon Hanson, who came in second. I think he's been very much a part of the fabric of our community and making our community happen. He's been involved as chair of the Woodlake Nature Center, he's been involved in Pennfest. He's just, he's just one of those guys that has, you know, if there's a cause, he's out there working very, very hard, and I look forward, we look all forward to working with Simon, and he'll be sitting right here, so he'll, you know, he'll be within pinching distance. So, anyway, thank you, Mayor.
I expect Councilmember Garcia will brutalize Simon, much like she did me for a couple of years, but he'll get used to it. It's called work hardening, I think.
In fact, that was why the mayor ran, because he got tired of my jabbing him a lot, so he thought he'd change.
The one thing I would like to say about the election, number one, I couldn't have been prouder of the four candidates that were representing Ward 1. I think they were all exemplary, were well-spoken, had legitimate concerns for not only Ward 1, but the city in its entirety, which I think is important, that everybody up here represents a ward, except for Councilmember Howard, he's at large, but the considerations and concerns we have are maybe focused on a particular ward, but they extend throughout the entire community, and I'm certain that Councilmember Troutman will be the same. Also, I can't tell you how much I appreciate the open voting that we have. I got over last week and voted because I wasn't going to be in a position to vote on the 23rd, and having that opportunity removes just about any excuse we can have to not vote. It's available, you can do it, and they'll accommodate you, and you can get over here and get it done, so even if you have problems on Election Day, you can still get over here and make your vote count. And I think, I think Mr. Kruger voiced it best. I mean, he was not the second place, but he indicated 20 votes separated, Councilmember Troutman from Mr. Hanson, and his point was, every vote does count. So remember that the next time an election comes up and make sure you get over and vote because it really matters. In regards to unity in the community, I'm going to be going over tomorrow night, I've got a bit of a conflict because the Open Streets on Pan Avenue has its first meeting tomorrow night, so I'm going to be there first, and then I'm going to be over at Unity. Unity is going to be great. Remember with open streets that we always need volunteers, people to help out, to marshal and manage the crowds that show up. I think we've gone up, I'm just guessing, this probably 10% or 15% every year. It's hard to estimate, but I've said this a number of times, if you stand up on the hill by London, look back down the street, it looks much like the midway at the fair. There's thousands and thousands of people that are showing up, and it's increasing every year, so let's make every year better, and we can use all the volunteers that can get out there. So I think that's it, and with that, we will move on to the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Consent calendar, Mr. DeBitch.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. For those in the audience, both here and at home, this consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved, and no further council action on these items is necessary. Tonight, we start with Item A, consideration of the approval of a resolution modifying the healthcare savings plan for management employees. Item B is consideration of the approval of a capital asset policy. I want you to know that Director Regis really worked hard on that, and it's something very important to him. I always give him a hard time about things like the capital asset policy. All right. Item C, consideration of approval of the Third Amendment to the site lease agreement at 6700 Portland Avenue between the City of Richfield and Sprint Spectrum Realty Company to reimburse the city for past electrical use. It's a check for about $17,000, $18,000 that we'll gladly accept. Consideration of the approval of a resolution authorizing the City of Richfield to enter into a contract with Hennepin County for sentencing-to-serv program services not to exceed $74,214.40 in 2017 and not to exceed $76,440 in 2018. Item E is consideration of the approval of a resolution authorizing the City of Richfield to enter into a safety grant agreement to accept funds totaling $7,500 from the Minnesota Department of Labor and Industries to be used towards the purchase of a valve maintenance trailer. I'm just going to take a half a second on this because this is so fascinating. You know, every year, every city has to go out, and you've got to turn the valves on your fire hydrants and those kind of things, and you have to turn them, you have to know what you're doing so you don't break the valve. And not only that, but it's very labor-intensive to turn those valves off and on. So this is a grant that gets us a trailer that does that automatically, which is so cool.
Like a robot or what?
Is it actually, I don't know, it's some type of robot?
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, look at that. We're really in the 21st century. All right. Item F is consideration of the approval of an annual request for a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Academy of Holy Angels, and that's located at 6600 Nicollet Avenue South for their Holy Angels Rock the Lawn event taking place on Friday, June 23rd, 2017. And then finally, consideration of the approval of a first reading of a transitory ordinance vacating 17th Avenue South Street right-of-way adjacent to the proposed Plaza 66 commercial development at approximately 66th and 17th Avenue, and schedule a public hearing and second reading for June 13th, 2017. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
Thank you, City Manager. Any comments in regards to the consent calendar? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent calendar is passed. Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez has Item 7.
The item for council consideration is the approval of the second reading of an ordinance rezoning properties currently addressed as 6601 16th Avenue, 6609 16th Avenue, 6615 16th Avenue, 6600 17th Avenue, 6608 17th Avenue, and 6614 17th Avenue, from general business to planned general business, and approval of a resolution for a planned unit development at the same location. The six parcels of land immediately south of 66th Street between 16th and 17th Avenues have been zoned for commercial use since 1968. At work sessions on February 9th and April 12th, 2016, and January 24th, 2017, interstate development presented concept plans to the city council, Housing Redevelopment Authority and Planning Commission for a multi-tenant commercial building on these properties. Based on feedback received at these meetings, the developer had submitted a plan that includes an attractive building with four-sided architect and direct pedestrian access to 66th Street. The development appropriately responds to the adjacent Three Rivers Regional Trail by providing access and parking throughout the property. Although no tenants have been announced, the developer has indicated that a coffee tenant would occupy the westernmost space with a drive-through, and negotiations are underway with a smaller restaurant chain that is not currently operating in or near Richfield, for the easternmost space with patio seating. The proposed plans are consistent with all but two zoning code requirements. These requirements can be adjusted under the terms of the planned unit development. Number one, businesses with drive-through service are conditionally permitted in this district. However, the proposed drive-through window is three feet closer to the adjacent residential property line than permitted by code. Number two, the proposed buffer between the parking lot and the adjacent residential property line is 4.5 feet narrower than required. The intent of these regulations is to protect adjacent residential property owners from nuisances related to headlights and noise. Staff believes that the proposed combination of fencing and landscaping will adequately address potential visual disturbances from vehicles in the parking lot. The component of the drive-through that does not meet the standard is the window, not the order station. The order station is 176 feet from the nearest residential property line and exceeds requirements. The pickup window, which would not include a speaker component, will be three feet closer to the property line than typically allowed. Given that this is the window and not the order board, combined with the fact it is westward-facing, it is westward-facing, makes staff confident that this three-foot adjustment will not harm the adjacent property. While the order board does not meet minimum requirements, staff added a stipulation, does meet minimum requirements, excuse me, staff added a stipulation to the resolution requiring that the drive-through speaker system include automatic volume control to adjust based ambient noise. Staff and the developer attended a neighborhood meeting on April 20th to discuss this proposal. A number of area residents also spoke at the hearing, public hearing held before the Planning Commission on April 24th. A number of area residents also spoke at the hearing, public hearing held before the planning commission on April 24th. The primary concerns mentioned was, uh, potential traffic increase on 16th Avenue. Noise and light pollution were also mentioned. Community development and public work, work staff indicated that discussions related to 16th Avenue would continue and the planning commission voted to recommend approval of the proposed development. Community development, public works and fire department staff met to discuss what, if any, measures should be taken to address a potential traffic increase on 16th Avenue. The recommendation of the group is to channelize the exit lane in order to direct traffic north on 16th Avenue. This recommendation and the reasoning behind it was communicated to the neighborhood in writing and at a meeting held on May 16th. Staff made clear the proposed resolution increases, includes a stipulation requiring traffic monitoring, monitoring after the development opens and that if traffic increases above acceptable residential thresholds, road modifications would be considered. Residents in attendance submitted the attached petition requesting 16th Avenue be made a dead end south of the development.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember. Um, Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez contacted me earlier this week and indicated that, um, she has had extensive contact with the neighbors and the people that have some really concerned, real concerns about the, the development going on at the end of their block. This isn't a public hearing, but, uh, Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez and I thought that, that it may be appropriate if, if, I don't know if you have a spokesperson or if you want to be heard one more time. We're going to break the rules a little bit and allow you to come up and speak to us. I'd ask you to, to, to try not to be repetitive. I know everything you're going to tell us is from the heart. You said it before. I was at the City Council meeting when you all spoke, so, so it's, I, I think you're entitled to, to speak in front of the City Council, even though it's not a public hearing. So I'd invite anybody that wants to come up to, to make statements or address us one more time and give us your thoughts and, and your feelings about what's going on in your neighborhood. Yeah, I said if you have a spokesperson, that's great, but I'm not limiting the number that can come up and speak. And Rosie, I won't let anybody know we go back a long ways, okay?
Here or here?
Um, at the mic, please.
Okay, thank you.
Um, it's, it's not a public meeting, but go ahead and sign in just for passing giggles, okay?
I was not prepared to speak first, so I don't have all my thoughts put together. I do have a few things to say. I worry about my street. Um, I know that, um, Councilmember Howard also lives on 66th or on 16th Avenue as well. He lives on the 70th hundred block on 16th Avenue.
Could you speak a little louder, please?
Sure. Um, at the last meeting I was at, I implored you to please take a drive down my block and see if you would like to have this new strip mall at the end of your street. We had some meetings in my home. I felt they were really productive. I really felt like we were being heard. Um, we had a, a council meeting here and, um, the developer along with this architect sitting right next to each other got up and was like, you know, we can make this happen for you. Really what you want is, you want a dead end, you want to secure your street, you want to make your neighbors on your block feel safe. Whether he had permission to do so or not, he drew a scribbled line on a piece of paper and said, I can make this happen. He couldn't make that happen. You can make this happen. Channel five came to our home today. They knocked on my door. They asked to interview me. While they were setting up their camera, the cameraman noted, oh my God. And I looked and he, Jane was standing there as well and he said, that guy just ran the stop sign. I said, we don't even notice it anymore. It happens all the time. Now that's a stop sign on a regular day. This is not a stop sign after your coffee shop, your sandwich shop, your restaurant with outdoor seating all ends up on the end of our block. My concern really is the traffic. There's some other small concerns I have. They are the wall or the barrier that is supposed to be, um, going up between the property um, of the young couple that live, will live next door to this and the development. Um, at a grassroots meeting in my home, we settled upon eight feet. Last, um, meeting I attended, uh, Mr. Stark referred to that wall again as a six-foot wall. Is it a six-foot wall or is it an eight-foot wall? I want clarification and I think the young family that's going to be living next door to that want clarification. Um, I went back through the video. I watched it again. It, it's proposed as a six-foot wall. Or, or that was what he mentioned at that meeting. Now whether that was a slip of the tongue, I don't know. But it's all these little things that are, we don't have any guarantees of. It's 3M makes a great sound. Okay, well, are you implementing that? Is that what we're getting, this new 3M sound technology? Are we getting all the things that you're promising us? And, um, we, we're really, really concerned about the traffic. We really, I am. I can't speak for everyone else. I am 100% concerned about the traffic on that street. A pork chop only prevents people from going south. It doesn't prevent anyone from coming down our street. And Mr. Howard, if you were leaving your home, are you going to drive over to Bloomington Avenue and take a right onto 66th Street and take a right onto 16th Avenue and then go left into that? I'm going to ask you. You're going to do that or you're going to come straight down 16th Avenue? Because that's the access into this and you're going to come down my block and you're going to take a right into this new development? Everyone's going to do that that lives on this side of town. Maybe if you're coming from another area, I don't know, but if this coffee shop, restaurant, all these things are new and exciting. Um, we don't have another drive-through coffee shop in Richfield that's going to be anything like this. When you start bringing those elements together, you're inviting traffic. You're putting in a drive-through coffee shop, not a walk-up coffee shop. Drive-through is cars. Cars is traffic. When that traffic has nowhere else to go, it's going to back up onto 16th Avenue. I implore you to make our street a dead end. We've got everyone in our neighborhood that is all for that. I spoke with police and, well, not police, I can't overspeak, but I spoke with fire. Some people that I know from the fire department. One of them's gentleman does live in a dead end. Yes, it's not ideal. I understand that it's not a perfect scenario, but you have over a hundred dead end streets in Richfield. One more isn't going to change anything. I have the utmost confidence in our police and fire to be able to respond to any kind of rescue situation that we have in our block if it's a dead end. I really feel that they can do their job perfectly, even in that scenario. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Can I ask a question first? When was the decision about the speaker made? That's new to us tonight. You said, Maria, that there was going to be some technology that's going to be used?
Oh, yeah.
In your reading?
Yes, that, I don't know when.
Cause that's the first we've heard. Um, I know you've talked about it, John, but we haven't had, you know, yes, we're going to use it. We, you know.
So, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, this, this type of technology first came to my knowledge about a year ago, uh, in discussing the Dunkin' Donuts on Penn Avenue. And so from an early time in discussing this with the developer, um, I'd shared with him staff's opinion that that would be an appropriate technology to use there. So we've been discussing it, um, from a very early stage in this. I don't remember when it was added as a stipulation. Um, I believe it was in the planning commission report, but I, I can't say for certain.
Okay, but it has been, is that part of?
It's part of the official documentation.
Okay.
That if the City Council were to approve it tonight, it's officially a requirement.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, I'd like to reiterate what Rosie said. Um, I'm more concerned about traffic as well. Um, a dead end would be great. It'd be perfect. We've done our research. Um, we've driven by the dead end. We've talked to people who live there. They don't have a problem with it. Um, in my opinion, it's the best way to separate residential from commercial. And it's the best way to protect our street. We, we, we don't know what's going to happen and I get that. I don't, I, I understand that you don't know how it's going to go. But, um, we've seen it increase over the years. Um, when 17th was closed, traffic crippled? It's, it's crazy. Um, I won't repeat most of, be, be too repetitive. I'm also concerned we hear, um, the restaurant portion will now have a liquor license. I worry about that too. Um, most often times, when people drink at an establishment, not everybody is responsible. They're not going to want to go on 66th because we have a great DUI program. And they've been catching people left and right. They're going to want to go on the side streets. That would be our street. So we're going to have drunk drivers to contend with too. Um, I'd also like to ask for a four-way stop at 16th and 67th. It's a major bus route. We have six different schools using that as a bus stop. Um, on occasion, we also get the city bus if Bloomington is too busy. Um, and the hours, we have our, we have noise ordinance we have to abide by. Um, is the coffee shop going to be allowed to be open at 5:30, 6:00 in the morning? Can we make it seven? Can we make it 7:30? Um, same with the restaurant. Are they going to be allowed to have people on the patio at 11? If they have a liquor license, are they going to be open until 2 AM? That would only give us four hours of peace in the middle of the night. So I would ask that you limit hours as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do want to mention that Risa wrote a letter to the council and the council did review that letter and read through it.
Jane Peterson, um, is a 40-year resident of Richfield. Um, when we were looking at the TV portion, they said it's been zoned. Uh, it's been zoned commercial since 68. We moved in 77. Richfield looked nothing like it does now. It was such a small town, community feel. And as the years have gone by, some of the changes have been okay. Some of the things that made us unique are gone, having our own golf course in a little community so close to Minneapolis. Building Best Buy, taking out all these single-family homes. We are now losing from our block a total of six more. Three on our side and three are on the other side. This is what concerns me for ourselves as a small community, losing the family homes. You can build condos, you can build duplexes, you can build things, but having your own little yard. And we have a young couple here that just moved in. That's going to be adjacent to this new development. They were going to raise their kids. It's going to be a whole different feel for them than those of us that had been around here for a long time. It's concerning. It makes me unhappy. Change is good. We've, you know, anybody that's in this room has lived through a lot of change. Some of it is good. Some of it, the jury's out. The dead end doesn't benefit us. It's going to ugly our neighborhood, but we will be safer. You cannot get on to Richfield Parkway on 67th. They built a hill. You can't get on to 66th on 67th. There's no place to go but funnel to us. It would be ideal if they took that traffic and took it to Bloomington, which is designed to handle more traffic, more public traffic. It's got a stoplight. The people have sidewalks. It's meant for the kind of increase we're going to have. Thank you.
Thank you.
You do a great job. Wouldn't want it.
I just had a, is it okay if I ask a question? Is that okay?
Um, I can guarantee an answer.
What, um, so what is in the proposal for, the, the fence is kind of a, a concern of mine. So is it a six-foot fence? Is that what's in it?
Could the, Lonnie, you want to speak to that?
Good evening. I'm Lonnie Preventure with Interstate Development. Uh, I think the ordinance is for a six-foot fence. I think the architecture should, no, is it an eight-foot fence?
Yeah, I can just read this out of the, um, the document that's in front of you under consideration. It says, "An eight-foot fence constructed of materials agreeable to owners of 6621 16th Avenue and 6620 17th Avenue is required between the development and said properties." Um, and so whether it's a, a stone fence or a wood fence, that's really, uh, that's something the developer has to negotiate with the property owners. I would say that the, the two property owners have to negotiate the same thing. But other than that.
You would hope.
Uh, so, so the, the way that is written, uh, works, uh, excellent for us, provided that, that language works for the, for the property owners. But I think it requires that we, uh, connect and, and discuss something that's amenable to all three parties.
Great, appreciate it.
Thank you. I wanted to hear that, I guess, again. Uh, concerns were already stated, but that's, that was all I had.
Thank you.
That was my fiancee, Tyler. Uh, we are the property directly affected by the drive-through. We live in the one just adjacent to it. Um, so I just wanted to thank you for letting us come up here and speak today. Um, I really do appreciate the opportunity and as I tell my students every day, every action that you take affects somebody, at least one person. And I think it's helpful when you can put a face to the people that you are directly affecting by making these decisions. Um, the one thing that I wanted to bring up that I haven't heard much about recently is the light, um, coming directly from the parking lot. So I just want to make sure that gets somewhere in there um, that we don't have just a constant lit up backyard, um, from the parking lot because I haven't heard about that recently and it hasn't been brought up. Um, so I would just like assurance again, I guess, um, that there will be, um, some sort of stipulation on light, just to make sure we kind of get some nighttime, I guess.
Mr. Mayor, before, um, Mr. Stark answers that, could I just remind people that, uh, because we have to have a record of people who spoke at a public meeting, um, if you were up there and you didn't sign in so that we can, uh, look back and see who you actually were, rather than trying to track you down somehow through the process, that would be helpful before you leave if you'd sign in, please. Thank you.
Do you want me to add him?
Sure, why don't you go ahead? Go, go ahead, Mr. Stark.
Well, and perhaps I'm going to put our AV people on the spot. Um, there is a lighting plan in your packet. And, uh, maybe I can just physically put it up there as well. Um, I'll do that. And I would say that some of, some of the technologies we're talking about, whether it's the drive-through speaker system or the lighting, have, um, have advanced quite a bit, um, e- even in the last few years. Every project we do, we do is required to submit a lighting plan. Uh, and the city has stringent lighting standards about how much light can spill over onto another property from your lighting. And I, I know you're never going to see the detail in this, but, um, you can see a lot of dots in there and every dot represents a light reading uh, of the lighting that's planned. And they are able with LED lighting and with, um, having it be directional. Uh, there's a, each one of those dots.
Sorry, I'm just trying to see if it's even readable to folk.
Each one of those dots, um, again, represents a, a readout of the light at that location. Um, each light has a specific, uh, coordinate, GPS coordinate attached to it. And the angle of that light is, um, you know, been scientifically determined by the, um, the lighting analysts, and they're, uh, the way that it shows, there's really zero light spill over from these lights onto adjacent properties. The light cuts off right at the property, they're able to do it that specifically.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add, I mean, you know, one way to think about that, for those of you who are in parts of the city, where we switched from the sodium vapor kind of lights to the LED lights. You know, one of the things that, there's a lot of pluses and minuses, you hear from people. Uh, the LED lights save everybody, saves us all a lot of money and energy, but, um, one of the things is, you know, people will say, well, yeah, it's lit up right underneath the light, but it doesn't have the kind of umbrella of light that some of the other kind of lighting had, and that's by the nature of LED lights, that's, that's how they are. And that's kind of what we're talking about here. You can really, you can really, uh, cut where the shadow starts when you have LED lights. And it, it's not like the kind of lighting that a lot of people are accustomed to, like we've seen in the past, the old-fashioned lighting that spills over into everything. I guess if you wanna take a look at how that looks, um, we just put, uh, LED lighting from Sheridan Avenue to, yeah, is it Sheridan to? Yeah, Seventy-sixth to Seventy-fourth Sheridan, is it Sheridan to, um, yeah, right around Sheridan, that, in that whole neighborhood, between Seventy-fourth and Seventy-sixth, we swapped out all the lights to put in LEDs. Um, and that changes the way the lights look, so you take, I mean, that's just a sense of how that LED lights work, uh, uh,
And, and the other thing to consider, with the sodium vapor lights, the light bulb tells, the light bulb itself determines the brightness, I mean, it's like, you know, changing your own light bulbs, if it's a fifty watt or a hundred watt. The light bulb is the determiner of the lighting. With LED, um, they are telling each individual LED how, how bright that one should be. And so again, the technology, uh, has just advanced so much on this.
We got a little deep in the weeds on lighting, but, but hopefully, hopefully at least some of your concerns are, are, if not dispelled, at least alleviated.
It is, I just, I just wanna make sure we know, because, I mean, our bedroom windows are against the fence and with those cars that much closer.
You got two people, Lonnie and John, so. Okay?
Yep.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate it. Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez, I know that, that you've been intimately involved, do you have some comments or, or some, some?
Yes. Um, so first I wanna thank the residents for coming. I wrote, uh, my comments 'cause I wanted to make sure that I mentioned everything and I didn't forget being up here. Um, so first of all, thank you to the residents and Lonnie, um, for coming, I greatly appreciate it. And I have been thinking about this for a very long time and talking to a lot of, um, people in the community about this. And, um, something I wanted to share is that I understand that there, that my neighbors are concerned with the disruption um, that, you know, is believed that this development will cause, the disruption that the development will cause, and the change that will come to our community. Um, particularly to the adjacent properties. And nobody wants disruption. But what we do want is a safe and peaceful Richfield with a high quality of life. And for years, um, we know that there's been very little investment sometimes on the east side, and now the time has come. Um, and for some, it's been too slow, and for some, it's been extremely quick, um, that this east-side change is coming. And I really feel that our job is to work together, um, to figure out the best path forward and build a strong, prosperous, rich field for everybody with the least amount of negative impacts to our community. Considering all of the factors and knowing that there isn't a perfect solution. Um, I wanna emphasize, and as one of the residents said, thank you for doing this, but I wouldn't wanna do it, it's, it's very difficult. Um, and the city decisions are very complicated, and it's not one or the other, a lot of times, they're not simple solutions, one or another. Um, they're very complicated solutions with many different things to consider. And in regards to the dead end, um, we have had several discussions with residents and staff. And it has been recommended to us, it has not been said, a dead end will not happen. What has been told to us is that a dead end is not recommended as the first option for traffic mitigation. Um, I wanted to share that I, I really commend the leadership of the residents and all of the work that you have done, particularly to, uh, Rosalie and Risa. I just feel very thankful. This, I wish everybody in Richfield would be as engaged as you all have been in city issues. Um, and I wanna say thank you to the city staff and to Lonnie as well. Um, and again, you know, something that we all need to do as leaders, not just the council, but community members as well, is exactly what you have been doing. And it's leveraging the tools, the people and the resources we have to do something that may not necessarily be comfortable or ideal, but advances us to a place that will be productive, um, and useful for the future of our community. And that's what I hope, um, and that's what I'm striving to do here with this project. Um, and I, I also wanna recognize that there's a lot of strong emotional impact of this project on my neighbors and on our Richfield residents, as is with many projects and redevelopments in our community. And that this is, you know, going to continue to happen, particularly on the east side. And while it's an exciting time of growth and renewal, it's also a time of big transformation and changes. And it can be definitely very scary and change the face of the community as we know it. Um, and I just continue, um, I wanna let you know that, um, we, as we continue to work together as residents, leaders and staff and the developer, um, I will do everything I can to continue to work hard with residents and everybody included to make sure that this development, um, is, continues to be a part of what is best for our Richfield community and for our neighborhood. And thank you again, um, for coming and working so hard alongside us.
Would you like to bring the motion, then we can get comments from the remaining council members?
Yes. I would like to make the motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance rezoning lots one, two, three, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, Block One, Cedar Sunrise addition from general business to planned general business. And approve the resolution approving a planned unit development, conditional use permit, and final development plan for a multi-tenant commercial development to build on properties legally described as lots one, two, three, fifteen, sixteen, Block One, Cedar Sunrise addition, and adjacent right-of-way.
I'll second the motion. Um, before we vote, Councilmember Howard, do you have anything to say?
Yes, um, I would echo many of the comments of Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez, uh, but above all else, I, I do wanna thank everyone who's here today, who spoke at this meeting and other meetings. You know, not just for showing up and, and, and talking about an issue important to you, but just being so respectful. I mean, these are incredibly personal issues, they affect you out of your back door every day. Um, and those personal issues can be so hard in this public arena. And to, to come here and be respectful and share your, uh, thoughts and concerns throughout this process, um, that's impacted me and how I'm thinking about this issue now and into the future. Um, so thank you for that. Uh, I did wanna mention a few things just about, um, to explain to, to these residents and the community uh, why I am gonna be supporting, uh, the motion today. Uh, this project has, uh, as mentioned in the opening, we've kind of been talking about this for more than a year. There's been, uh, we had a work session where this project was brought before us, and it wasn't so comfortable for, uh, for Lonnie, as he heard feedback from the council, um, about concerns we had for the community, for the residents, uh, and how this would, property would interact with the neighborhood and community at large. Uh, when we came back and have the, the proposal here today, I mean, it has improved immensely. I think in terms of access points and whatnot for residents and how it will be accessed for the community at large. Uh, and a big piece of that is the, when you look at the other development that's happening in the area and on the east side, uh, when we look at Sixty-Sixth Street, uh, that development and what it's gonna look like in a couple of years, a, a dynamic gateway through the city uh, that's accessible not only for motorists but cyclists and pedestrians. The type of development I think we'll see here is one that is accessible and dynamic, uh, in a way that uh, makes sense for that corner, for Sixty-Sixth Street, for our community at large. And that gets, I wanna mention something that I believe it was Courtney said, she, she mentioned that every action you take has an impact on residents, and that is absolutely true. Um, but what can be challenging for us as council members and things we have to wrestle with is those impacts are different for different residents in our community. And so we have to balance the concerns we're hearing from neighbors that live on that block with the desires, uh, from community members at large. And, and I can tell you, as I've doorknocked throughout the east side uh, over the years, I've heard from so many residents that have said, you know, when is the east side gonna get their development? You know, wh- when are we gonna have a, a restaurant where we could sit outside? Um, and it, it's, when we look at this project, I, there is value coming to the community at large that, in a place that isn't there before, that is a desire that we've heard from the community. Um, and so we have to, to balance those things. Uh, and, uh, so what, for me, when balancing those things, I think the, the right move for the city i- is to, to vote yes and to take the step forward in, in its progress. But voting yes on this does not mean saying no to the, the input we're hearing from residents. It's very important that this open dialogue continues. Uh, we're already seeing, uh, positive progress in that, in looking at a, a developer that's gonna work with their neighbors on the, the wall with, uh, an eight-foot wall versus a six-foot wall, the discussion we've had about noise and traffic. It will require, uh, a level of communication with neighbors as we see this move forward. And my commitment, I know the commitment of everyone up here, is to earnestly work with you, uh, to make sure that if there are these concerns, that we can, uh, examine solutions, uh, when, when the time comes. That's something we have to take very seriously, and I would hope, I, I know that this outcome is not gonna be, be one that, that you want, but I would hope that the process and the amount of time that council members and our city staff has spent listening to you at least gives you some hope that we will continue to do so, uh, in the future. Uh, so with that, I'll turn it over for other comments, but uh, thank you again for coming here, uh, and I do look forward to, to voting yes on this project, I think it's the right move for the future.
Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, in the eighties, we had a community, it was just residential community. We didn't have much development to speak of. Uh, we lost out because we wanted to remain a bedroom community. We lost out to sit-down restaurants, to department stores, to hotels. We lost out a lot of tax base. And why? Because that council didn't look ahead, didn't project of what was gonna happen down the line. And I like to look at the big picture. And the big picture nowadays is that, you know, we're really hurting in terms, you look, you looked at the revenue about the liquor stores. And we have a lot of competition out there. Um, and you look at, you look at, uh, at, at what we pay for taxes. And one of the things that commercial, uh, commercial, uh, property and business property is, it alleviates a big, big burden on the city. And why is that important? For one thing, the cost of doing sweet streets or, or, uh, any kind of infrastructure, that's going up. So we have to face that. The other thing is, we're losing money that we used to rely on, that we used to just take for granted from the state of Minnesota. And that's local government aid, fiscal disparities and other, um, funds. The same thing with the federal government. The administration has told us that, uh, the community development block grant is gonna disappear. We really relied on that. So you have to look at the big picture. I agree with, uh, uh, you know, I think that, uh, Councilmember, Member Reagan Gonzalez. Uh, I really applaud her because I think she has made, uh, every effort that she could. Uh, I think you rarely, rarely see council members that will not respond to their constituents. Well, she has gone, I think, well and above be, you know, beyond, um, really working well with her constituents. Um, and I know this is a difficult decision, but it's, it's like Councilmember Howard also said, you know, if things don't work out, we can always change them, but we have to give the process an opportunity to work. And we have to look at, at what's, you know, we have to look at the big picture and see, you know, where are we going? And, and how are we gonna handle the situation? Cause we all want a decent community with good schools, good tax base, good housing. But all of that, it takes money, and it takes money, not, we don't want it from your pockets, we want it from other pockets. Where we pay county money, we pay state money, we pay federal money. And, and we wanna get some of that back, cause we deserve it. And, uh, so be assured that your voice, you're champions, your voice is heard, your voice is necessary. And, and without you, you know, you know, we could, we could blindly do whatever we desired. But you're, you're very, you're the most important asset in this community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just, if I can make one point, I, I just wanna reiterate on the record that staff will be continuing, um, in the future to monitor traffic, lighting, noise, uh, to monitor that the wall or fence is indeed built with the, uh, cooperation of the neighbors. So this, it's not like when you gavel, it's the, the bench after this vote that this is over. Uh, this is gonna be something we're gonna continue to work on. Um, the, and I, I can guarantee you there are gonna be some bugs. Um, but we need to know about those bugs so we can address them. Uh, and so, um, this isn't the end. This is hopefully a beginning.
So I just wanna thank Mr. Stark for putting the icing on the cake. Anything I could have said has been said. Um, I, I do wanna just pass on one kind of anecdotal thing, just to give you some indication. There's an indication that, that sometimes the job appears to be hard, sometimes we appear to make decisions without giving deep thought or, or having any emotion tied to it. Um, back when, way back when, when, when you work on Sixty-Sixth Street was just a, a county dream that was hidden in a back room, that they were getting ready to spring on us. Um, I was walking my dogs in the neighborhood, there's a, a lot of people in my neighborhood that are out at five, five-thirty in the morning walking their dogs. And we've got a kind of, a, a mini-community in itself. There's a lady that lived on sixty-six oh-one Newton, or Morgan Avenue South. She was an English lady, had lost her partner a couple of years before, and we ran into each other all the time in the morning. And she approached me one morning and, and said, you know, do you know anything about a notice I got in the mail that, that there's a possibility that they may be taking my house? And I said, you're crazy, that's not gonna happen. And nobody takes houses on Sixty-Sixth Street in Richfield. So I said, you know, let me check on it. So I came in and talked with Mike Eastling. And Mike kinda danced around a little bit, and he said, you know, it, it's not a reality, it's a possibility, they're, we're planning the road right now. So I went back and told that lady, I said, you know, I'm, if I have anything to say about it, I see, I'll see that it doesn't happen. Well, as you all know, we lost eighteen homes, all on the, the, uh, south side of Sixty-Sixth Street from Oliver Avenue all the way up to Garfield. And I, and believe it or not, the lady now lives on Sixty-Sixth and Oliver, about a half-block from my house. She moved from, from Morgan to Oliver, so it worked out well for her. And, but while that was going on, Mayor Gattell and myself walked and, and knocked on the door on every house on the south side of Sixty-Sixth Street and talked to the people. Um, some were adamant, one lady had lived there forty years and worked at Michael's and I think collected every kit there and made it and hung it on her walls because you couldn't get through their house very well. But the, the point I'm trying to make is that we did that not to, to, to make promises we couldn't keep, but to tell them we're gonna do everything we can to, to make it right for them. Um, in this particular case, um, obviously those, those houses are gone, Sixty-Sixth is getting worked on. And not too long ago, after having and not too long ago, after having kind of walked down 66th and looked at some of the stuff that had been removed, I kind of caught the vision of what 66th Street's going to look like. And as much as I felt bad and horrible about allowing those houses to be taken, I took a look at that and realized, as much as it hurt those eighteen homeowners, as much as it hurt me to lose them, I think it's going to be a tremendous benefit to the city of Richfield itself. And it's what I was trying to say before, is that we're all local to a certain extent, to our ward, to our neighborhood, to our friends in close proximity, councilmember Reagan Gonzalez, everybody on the south side, councilmember Howard to his contingency, the same with councilmember Garcia. But when we're up here and we get presented with proposals and resolutions and options, at the end of the day, you've got to set aside the narrow view and approach the wider view for the entire city and the entire community, and what do we think is going to benefit of? We're not always right, but we've got to make the decision with our head and with our hearts, and I think you heard three people up here tell you that what they're doing up here is with their head and their heart, and it's with a distinct eye towards your interests and what you're looking for, and not giving up and not saying, "This vote doesn't end the commitment to you to make as many improvements as necessary to make it as comfortable, as nice as you want that neighborhood to remain." So, once again, I appreciate all the comments from up here, and with that being said, we have a motion in a second. I would call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes. Thank you very much, folks. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the approval of a resolution authorizing the city of Richfield to accept a center for prevention at Blue Cross Blue Shield grant for $20,500 to be applied toward installation, education, and evaluation of temporary pedestrian crossings of Nicollet Avenue. The city applied for and was awarded an active place demonstration grant from the Center of Prevention at Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota in the amount of $20,500. The proposed pedestrian demonstration project consists of three enhanced pedestrian crosswalks that link identified racially concentrated area of poverty to two major destinations, Augsburg Park and Augsburg Park Public Library. In addition to the crossing of Nicollet Avenue, crosswalk safety education events and a study of the effectiveness of the crossings are proposed. The enhanced crosswalks on Nicollet Avenue are proposed at 71st, 72nd, and 73rd Streets and include striping, delineators, and refuge islands constructed in a temporary condition. A major goal for the city is to provide safer crossings of busy roadways. Richfield's major roads can be barriers for people to move around the community. Walkers, transit riders, and bicyclists are challenged by unsafe crossings of these roadways. This demonstration project will provide data to be used for design of safer crossings. The future reconstruction of Nicollet, Lindale, and Penn Avenues would all be guided to include safer crossing designs and eliminate the barriers that these major roads create across the city. Staff, do we have comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was going to have Jack Burrows, our transportation engineer, go over what we're talking about more, so I'll let him do that.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, my name is Jack Burrows, I'm the transportation engineer for the city of Richfield. I'm going to give you a quick little background on what was happening here. The Center for Prevention, Blue Cross, had a request for proposals that came out, and in their mission, and it was a competitive grant, and one of the things that they, of course, are looking for is improvement in health for the community that they sponsor. But it's also got an equity component. They specifically, in this grant request, targeted some Metropolitan Council data, and in this figure here, there's a highlighted area that shows the racially concentrated area of poverty as defined by the Metropolitan Council, in which they were hoping to address as these dollars were allocated in this competitive grant. And so, as we sat down and we started to put our strategy together for proposing, we pulled out the guiding principles, you referred to 66th Street, before any of that work began, the Sweet Streets Public Works Program. It's hard to read here, so I have some of the titles here. We went through a process with council and all the city commissions to try to help understand the long-term future, long-term meaning maybe fifty years out, where are we going? And we needed to understand how transportation can influence directly and indirectly the community. And you see in the, I think it's the seventh bullet here, it says, "Healthy, health and active lifestyles is an important part of the vision of the community of Richfield." And so, as we entered into those major county road projects, these were our guiding principles. To show you that result is Portland, you referred to us coming up on 66th Street. We think we are making a difference, we are heading the community down a new path with our Sweet Streets approach. And so, when we responded to this grant, we recognized it wasn't just a public works project. So I worked with Jim Topisover, we collaborated, and we looked at much more than the physical, we looked at this location, serving that population, but to the functions of what happens at Augsburg Park, the library. We collaborated with Pennington County. And so, you think about all the programs, all the things that happened at Augsburg, the community center, etc., that week, we took a look at that and said, and we wrote our proposal based on that. Physically, again, it's only a portion of this, you take a look at what we did on Portland, we proposed to do something temporary to meet this grant. So physically, to put in some features that enhance the crosswalks and paint, but also some tube delineators that we often use in construction, trying to make some visual differences, similar to the success we've had in Portland with improving the safety of the crosswalk. But I would say almost more importantly, this program is, is not only to study and understand and evaluate, but it's an education component. So we're working with the library, we're going to have educational pieces, the playground program will be integrated into the education, we're working with MINDOT. MINDOT has educational crosswalk events to basically parade volunteers of the community, parade through the intersection and educate. So we are looking at that. The program would physically go together, we'd run this June through August, and then the results would be following September through October. They're also looking for long-term lasting effects. We have a crosswalk policy for the city, we would evaluate that and possibly update it with the data that we learned, and they do request that we follow up with long-term lasting influences a year after.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
I was in the Community Service Commission when this was discussed, it's a terrific idea, and I don't know if you know that councilmember Reagan Gonzalez works at Blue Cross Blue Shield, and she helped kind of usher this along. This is really needed because at that particular street, you have so many crossings from, you know, so many kids that, and their parents that cross that street, either to the park or to the library. We have a lot, you know, if you haven't been to the Augsburg Library at night, you should go some school night, and there's an awful lot of tutoring that goes on there. So this is a real investment in the safety for our community, and I think it's any time that we could capture, you know, other monies, other grant monies, to help us achieve the goals that we need and have, I think it's a big plus.
Thank you. With that being said, at this time, where'd my motion go? I would move to approve the attached resolution authorizing an active place demonstration project funds agreement between the city of Richfield and the Center of Prevention at Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That this motion is approved. City managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm just going to comment on a couple of quick things. One, I want to comment on the election. First of all, the turnout was something like over, somewhere between ten and eleven percent. That's extraordinary for an election that happens this time of the year. It's really a tribute to the people of this community. Richfield is always one of the highest voter turnout cities in the state of Minnesota, and as you know, Minnesota is the number-one state for voter turnout across the country. Having said that, you know, the one thing that doesn't get mentioned, and from someone who started off many years ago as a city clerk, you know what, running an election and having it turn out without a problem is a lot of work. You have to have, you have to keep track of a lot of things in your head, you have to have a lot of things that happen according to law, and you have to make sure that you have people trained appropriately so that when the voter comes in, the process is seamless for them. And I want to make sure that I give our city clerk's office, and city clerk Beth Ben, who's the credit, you can't imagine how many hours that she spends here putting this all together and kind of being the orchestra leader of a very complicated symphony that is called an election.
Here, here.
Thank you, Michael, thank you very much. Second of all, I want to mention that the social media operation that we have here, we have somebody new, and we're doing a little different take, we're using that person's skill set to the best of our advantage, and that is more towards the social media and that kind of aspect rather than cable broadcast. So I think what you're going to see in the community is a stepped-up information process coming out of the city that's much more robust than you've seen in the past, and I expect that'll be kicking in, you know, fairly shortly, I would expect in a few months that you'll see that. So be looking forward, and folks at home, it's the same thing. Very quick legislative update. Our three bills that are so important, two TIF bills that are in, excuse me, in the tax bill, and our language for the 77th Street underpass, you know, providing those, the tax bill and the bonding bill get signed this legislative session, that'll mean that we would have received what we were looking for in our TIF bills and the underpass language, and, you know, that would be a strong thank you to our legislative representatives over in St. Paul, because they all work hard to make sure that we get what we need here in Richfield, and they've always done that for us. But that's going to signal if those things come through, some of the development that's been sitting there for a while, I think that once those are officially approved, for one thing, you're going to see the underpass is going to actually start immediately after we would get that notification. And then, development on the east side, I think, becomes more attractive and certainly lakes at Lindale. So that, I believe, would be the generator to see some more things happening. And then finally, I think the project that we talked about tonight is, it's representative of what you're going to see in Richfield. The interest that people not only have in Richfield who are moving here to buying single-family homes, obviously the hottest housing market, but the interest that developers are looking at again in Richfield. You know, we've had some vacancies down at the ILN, or that's the area there just south of 77th Street, just west of Lindale going over towards I-35. We've got Gulf Galaxy coming into the Borders facility, and we have, obviously, we've talked about before, the old Don Pavlos is going to get scraped flat, and we're going to get a drive-in Panera Bread, or Panera Restaurant, I should say, there. And then, there's a possibility of somebody going into the vacant sports authority. That would put a lot more energy, synergy into that part of town, it would help all the business down there. And it's just part of the vitality that we see, again, people having an interest in Richfield. So I think, I think the kind of development that you're seeing tonight and people in the community have seen is, it's not an anomaly, it's the start of something that you're going to see continuing in Richfield, and it's good for the, good for this community, as councilmember Garcia said, to help balance the tax base for all the infrastructure repairs that we're doing in this community to keep Richfield looking really good, from our streets to the stuff you don't see under the streets. It all costs a lot of money, and that's all part and parcel of making this and keeping this a very attractive, vital community. So I feel very good about that, but that's my report for this evening.
Thank you. Claims and payroll for May 9th, 2017, and May 23rd, 2017?
Mr. Mayor, before I move those, I want to make sure that you know that May the 9th, we had signed the document, and for some reason, we didn't act on it, and it's not an error on our part, it happened to be an error on that side of the TIS. But Mr. DeVich was nice enough to accept responsibility.
We're not going to point fingers.
I'm assuming he was on his phone or something?
Probably, probably, yeah, or, you know, those occasional naps.
Okay, well, that's age-appropriate.
But, and I also thank you for being a good sport. I know that I tease you an awful lot, but, you know, we need a little levity too. So I would like to move claims and payroll, May the 9th of 2017, and May the 23rd of 2017.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At this time, we are going to adjourn to a special city council closed executive session regarding city manager's annual performance evaluation. We will be back.
And Mr. Mayor, just for the record, this will be closed pursuant to Minnesota statute 13D.05 subdivision 3A.
That's what we have you here for.
Yes. You should really let your attorney speak once during every meeting. It's usually, I understand it's usually best that we don't, but there should be, there should be some opportunity.
It was my assumption our attorney's been speaking all night.
Make sure you influence Mr. DeVich when he forgets things.
Reconvening the regular city council meeting of May 24th in the council chambers. We're here to discuss and also review the City Manager's annual performance evaluation and move to amend a resol, or move, or have a resolution amending the employment agreement between the City of Richfield City Manager Stephen L. DeVich for 2017. Mr. DeVich, would you like me to do a summary review, or would you rather offer it yourself?
No, I'll defer, Mayor. I'll just defer. I'll defer to you, sir.
Okay. We're provided, you know, there were a number of noteworthy things that happened throughout the year. Some of them, you know, some of them are more obvious, and I think it may be more appropriate just to articulate some of the things that may go unnoticed, but improve the quality of the services that you can provide to the city, and also actually generate what may be called hidden revenue that has kind of come into play because of the expertise of the executive staff and the staff that works under him. For example, we had 2016 revenues of $291,752 from passports, and, see, I don't have glasses on, $529,792 from deputy registration fees. That's with the same staffing levels as we had in 2015. There was a successful grant submitted for an additional $7 million in federal funding for the 77th Street underpass. We had redevelopment of a new Audi dealership underway on the east side that has a spring 17 opening. And I think that that, when they came in and that passed, and they started developing over on the east side, was the first indication that people are starting to look at what's going to happen on the 77th Street with the underpass and everything else, and that over the next four or five years, going to be an explosion of growth, and it's going to be really exciting to watch. In terms of community development, also, we had six new homes built with Richfield rediscovered funds, secured development, which as a matter of fact, I saw on the city page, or Facebook page today, that they had the heavy equipment out there and actually returning earth in the old city garage site. It was interesting, because somebody took a picture of a couple shovels sitting up on the lot up there, wondering what was going on. So, construction, but we, you know. So, once again, that's kind of nice, because I think we're going to see some more groundbreaking shortly continuing on the east side, which is always welcomed. Completed the remodeling of the Cedar Avenue Liquor Store. In terms of finance, ended 2016, once again, with a surplus, and the fund balance remained at 42% of revenues. And over the last four or five years, I think it's been noteworthy, I think, not last year or the year before, I think we were one of only several municipalities in the entire state whose bond ratings absolutely went up, as opposed to saying stagnant or going down. In the public safety, we've had an enhanced, refined community outreach and community-oriented policing program. Police officers spend 24 hours just doing community operations and things like that, which, once again, it's difficult in this day and age, and we have a downtown at 66th and Lyndale, but we don't have the type of downtown that warrants foot patrols and everything like this. So getting the police officers out of the car and into the neighborhoods, I think it just creates a much more harmony in the community between the police and the citizens there, there to protect. Public Works, we began the planning and contract negotiations and securing funding for the 66th Street project, which is ongoing as we speak. Richfield Pool sent record-high revenue in 2016, beating the 2015 total by over $14,000. The summer food program is ongoing and healthy. 2016, over 1,800 meals were served. And we continue to have holiday celebrations that are recognized and well-known, not only metro-wide but statewide, including our Fourth of July celebration and our Memorial Day, I think are And then you, and then you went to finance.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah.
Mr. Deitch, would you like me to do a summary review or would you rather offer it yourself?
No, I'll defer, Mayor. I'll defer. I'll defer to you, sir.
Okay. We're provided, you know, there were a number of noteworthy things that happened throughout the year. Some of them, you know, some of them are more obvious and I think it may be more appropriate just to articulate some of the things that may go unnoticed, but improve the quality of the services that you can provide to the city and also actually generate what may be called hidden revenue that has kind of come into play because of the expertise of the executive staff and the staff that works under him. For example, we had 2016 revenues of $291,752 from passports and see, I don't have glasses on, $529,792 from deputy registration fees. That's with the same staffing levels as we had in 2015. There was a successful grant submitted for an additional $7 million in federal funding for the Seventy-seventh Street underpass. We had redevelopment of a new Audi dealership underway on the east side that has a spring seventeen opening. And I think that that, when they came in and that passed and they started developing over on the east side, was the first indication that people are starting to look at what's going to happen on the Seventy-seventh Street with the underpass and everything else and that over the next four or five years is going to be an explosion of growth and it's going to be really exciting to watch. In terms of community development, also, we had six new homes built with Richfield rediscovered funds. Secured development, which as a matter of fact, I saw on the city page, or Facebook page today, that they had the heavy equipment out there and actually returning earth in the old city garage site. It was interesting because somebody took a picture of a couple of shovels sitting up on the lot up there and wondering what was going on. So, construction, but we, you know. So, once again, that's kind of nice because I think we're going to see some more groundbreaking shortly continuing on the east side, which is always welcomed. Completed the remodeling of the Cedar Avenue Liquor Store. In terms of finance, ended 2016, once again with a surplus and the fund balance remained at forty-two percent of revenues. And over the last four or five years, I think it's been noteworthy, I think, not last year, the year before, I think we were one of only several municipalities in the entire state whose bond ratings absolutely went up as opposed to saying stagnant or going down. In the public safety, we've had an enhanced, refined community outreach and community oriented policing program. Police officers spend twenty-four hours just doing community operations and things like that, which, once again, it's difficult in this day and age and we have a downtown at Sixty-sixth and Lyndale, but we don't have the type of downtown that warrants foot patrols and everything like this. So, getting the police officers out of the car and into the neighborhoods, I think it just creates a much more harmony in the community between the police and the citizens there, there to protect. Public Works, we began the planning and contract negotiations and securing funding for the Sixty-sixth Street project, which is ongoing as we speak. Richfield Pool sent record high revenue in 2016, beating the 2015 total by over $14,000. The summer food program is ongoing and healthy. 2016, over eighteen hundred meals were served. And we continue to have holiday celebrations that are recognized and well-known, not only metro-wide but statewide, including our Fourth of July celebration and our Memorial Day. I think our all-veterans memorial park is outstanding. And that kind of goes back to some of the things that got put in place a long time ago. When the presentation or the suggestion to have an all-veterans memorial came up, I think city manager went out and with Mr. Toppets Hoffer had two or three variations on a bid, on bids, and at his suggestion and the city council and the mayor moving us in that direction, we didn't go halfway, we went all the way, say if we're going to do this, we're going to do it right. And it continues to improve, continues to get better, and that'll be evidenced this Memorial Day when you see the celebration there at two o'clock. It's well-attended, it's publicized. The city gets a lot of media, both print and TV. And it gives recognition to who we are and what we are. And I think a large part of that goes to the guidance and leadership ability of Mr. Deitch and the staff that he's built around him, who not only are highly professional, but all seem to have a real significant desire to keep improving Richfield and keep moving it forward. And with that being said, I don't see any way we can give you four additional hours of vacation. That's just, that's over the top, it's a little bit beyond the pale, Steve, so. So, but with that being said, what we would suggest for terms of a revised employment agreement is a 3.75% raise. And I got my arm twisted by Maria, so we will grant you an additional four hours of vacation time. You're probably going to have to itemize what you're going to use that money for, but you can take your time and figure it out, okay?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor of the council. With respect to the four hours, yeah, it's a selling back of hours that I already have and I much appreciate that. I would say that I would respectfully ask you to reconsider and reduce that to 2.75. I would feel much better at that, I honestly would. That's the base adjustment that other city employees got. And I'm a, I'm a pretty strong believer in if that's what other people got who are at the top of their, you know, basically, their pay plans, they get, they get, they got 2.75, then I should get 2.75. When I always talk to people about settling contracts and pay plans for people, I always said, from the, from the day I got here, that whether you're, whether you're represented by a collective bargaining group or you're somebody who is not represented, like the clerical staff, we only have so much money to spread around. We're never going to be the very top paying city, but we can't afford to be the bottom paying city, so people steal our staff. We train them and we train them well at Richfield. And I don't want that staff leaving, going somewhere else. So, I take whatever money we can possibly give people and spread that around. And honestly, I would, I would, I would feel so much better if that was reduced to 2.75, and that's the honest God's truth.
In, in respect to your wishes, far be it from us to do something that you'd be uncomfortable with. I appreciate the honesty and the integrity and based on your request, we will amend the employment agreement to represent a 2.75% raise in your base salary and also allow you to sell four hours back of vacation.
Thank you so very much, I appreciate that.
You're entitled to get what you want.
Thank you. And I would say thank you to the city council. You're a very good city council to work with. And any city manager working for the city of Richfield should be, should be pleased to be able to have a city council that treats staff very respectfully. And, you know, you do a fine job of listening to the information that we present. You don't always agree with everything staff gives you, but you look at it all and then you make your decisions. And like I said, it's, it's a very honorable civil process that we have at Richfield and we've had for a long time. And I think that that speaks well of the city. And for people who watch city council meetings, I just, having, having that honest, back-and-forth, respectful discord is what I think we should all have. Council staff, council residents, staff, and I always make sure that we treat our residents, that staff treat residents with the utmost respect. And I think that's all we could treat it back if that's what we do. So, I thank you for that. I couldn't ask for a better situation to work in.
Well, thank you. Appreciate your.
And I want to thank you too.
Thank you.
You're doing a heck of a great job. Thank you so much for your service.
Thanks.
Did you make the motion, Mayor?
Richfield and Steven Deitch, the city manager, to represent a increase in his salary of 2.75% and also accept his offer to sell back four hours of vacation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion is approved. With that, the meeting is adjourned.